Okay, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
We make a motion, we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I believe we have to add somewhere in here the chief's report. If that's acceptable. Where would you like to put it?
Let's do it right after citizens' comments.
Right after citizens'. Right after citizens' comments, okay. All those in favor of the motion with the addition indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion's approved. Approval of the minutes, first set, seven twenty-nine. Is there a motion?
I would move- Oh, go ahead, go.
It's yours, Bob.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of seven twenty-nine, eight-eight, and eight-eleven.
Second?
And a second. All those-
Jim? Jim?
Yes, Allison.
I have the minutes from the twentieth that were put off to this meeting at the last meeting.
Twenty-first or twentieth?
Twentieth. I have written on the top that they were moved to the agenda of the eighth, August eighth, to be approved.
Yeah, let me see. There was, I thought it was supposed to be the twenty-first meetings in here, or in here.
We've got the-
I don't even see those.
We've got the twenty-ninth, the, um, the eighth, and the eleventh.
It was the, the meeting of the twentieth, we're discussing the arcophones. They were never approved.
They don't have in their packet.
Dick made the motion at the last meeting to move them to this one.
That's right, I did. And I also asked the town manager to include them in our packet and-
I failed to do that.
And somehow that didn't happen, so if we could have him include them in the packet for the next meeting?
Sounds logical.
I mean, I could probably drag mine out from the pile of stuff I have on my desk.
Okay. We'll have it-
Who, who, who seconded the motion that, that Bob just made?
J Mark.
J Mark.
Thank you.
Mike.
I believe there's still another set of minutes that weren't approved, for the twenty-first of July. You got them at the meeting and you said, I, I'm looking at the old, in here.
We had a meeting on the twenty-first as well. I know we had one on the twentieth.
Maybe it was the twentieth then.
I don't believe we had one on the twenty-first.
I think that's what Allison just talked about.
Alright.
Okay. So what would you like to do? Joe?
Regarding the special meeting on July twenty-ninth-
Yes.
I have a number of suggestions, but it might be easier for me to pass this document on to Allison through Mike, which contains the revision we made and that I moved. In the section that's bold and underlined, starting with the fourth line where it says, "J Mark moved to substitute the existing paragraph titled 'Deciding to Accept a Purchase or Lease Offer' with colon." There are a number of small, um, errors in that next section. I, I can point them out individually if that would be best, or I could provide the text that I shared at that meeting and give that to Allison.
Okay.
Whatever your preference is.
Sounds like the second option is, um-
I think that would be much cleaner, Joe.
Sure.
If we did it that way, sure.
The other comment that I would make was that in the, where is it, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line of that section, it ends with, "J Mark stated he hoped that language would clarify the paragraph," and it eliminates the language. That section, uh, I think shouldn't be in bold and underlined because it's not related, uh, it doesn't specifically address the motion. But then, on the fourth line from the bottom, where it says, "Seconded by R. Combs," that should continue to be bold and underlined. And that's it for me on those particular minutes, and I'll give this to you, Mike.
Okay. Where are we now? Who's on first? Are we at the twenty-ninth now?
I'm willing to move on to August eighth.
I am too.
Okay. Okay, um, moving on into the twenty-ninth, is that correct?
August eighth.
August eighth.
August eighth, oh, okay. So we took, took care of that one. August eighth. Additions or corrections? Yes, Joe?
So on, on page one, towards the bottom, before it's stated, "All were in favor." It's just a small change, the word "need" should be, should have an S. On page two, under citizens' comments and concerns, uh, there's a comma after "bird." That should be deleted. Moving down, two paragraphs, in the second paragraph that starts with M. McIntyre, the third line, um, refers to PEG TV's YouTube channel. That should be capital Y-O-U, capital T-U-B-E. The fourth line of that paragraph, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what the phrase "with a valid reason" means. "J. Lamy stated as many as need to, if they are not able to be present, with a valid reason." I, I don't know whether you said that, Mr. Chairman, but-
I did, Dick, or Joe.
Okay. In the second to last line of that paragraph, um, the word "combined" should be stricken. "J. Lamy stated the vote of combined, the combined boards was to sell." I think it should say, "J. Lamy stated the vote of the combined boards was to sell." Moving on down to the two paragraphs later, uh, the paragraph that starts J. Curry, in the fourth line, uh, there's a sentence that ends with reconsideration of the DRB. I think the word "decision" would be useful there. In the next paragraph, R. Combs would like to know what J. Curry wants the DRB wants to reconsider. I think we should strike the word "wants," and following the comma, uh, we should add the word "the" before entire decision or just part of it. And in the last paragraph that starts with Andrew Rodriguez, the, Andrew Rodriguez and Evan Fitzgerald, comma, uh, who were present, are working on this project, so insert, uh, after Fitzgerald, comma, who were present, and, add a comma, and delete the next "who." And in the fourth line of the bottom of that page, "If it is not construction," I think should be, "if it is not constructed," E.D. Moving on to page three, um, under CEDRAC bylaws, two lines below the bold and underlined section, we say, "The planning commission will ask someone will to be appointed." Delete the word "will." The next paragraph begins, "J. Mark modified the motion to make," and I would, instead of "this superseding any previous appointments," add, that is, delete "this superseding," add "clear that this action supersedes any previous appointments." In the update on broadband internet by Tim Monks, uh, the fourth line, after the dollar value forty-four, four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, delete, "has been granted," but add a comma. The next section, I don't, I don't remember what was said, but it's as written, confusing. "The internet service providers Comcast, Telco, and consolidated, et cetera, and this is primarily targeted for unserved or underserved addresses." If any can, anybody can remember what Tim said at that point, it would be good to clarify that. In the final line of that paragraph, we say, "Tim Monks stated, T. Monks stated that they need to have two-hundred megabytes per second download." And instead of whatever I crossed out there, it should say, "as a minimum." And, um, under RCSWD update, "T. Gilbert, no meeting in July or August," we should add, "reported that there had been no meeting in July or August," period, I would suggest. He added that the procedure for household hazardous waste has been smoothed out. I would insert, "he added that the procedure." In the next line, "T. Gilbert, they are currently doing," I think we need a verb in there, "T. Gilbert said," should be added, "they are currently doing household by appointment." What does the household refer to? I assume that means-
Household hazardous waste.
Right. That should be added. And the description of the manager's report, um, needs some straightening out, but that's a point at which I kind of gave up.
Hey, Joe. Dick?
I'm all set.
Bob?
I'm good.
I'm good too. Want to move on to the next one, gentlemen?
It's fine.
That would be August eleventh?
Yep.
That would be August eleventh, right?
I'm okay with that one too.
You're okay with that one, Joe?
I am.
Okay. Bob? Okay.
Excuse me, Jim?
Yes, Allison.
You already approved your July twenty-ninth minutes in the August eighth meeting.
That's why I was confused when Joe was talking about August, or July twenty-ninth. I looked back at the eighth packet and there were changes already made to that one. And it was approved four to zero.
Okay. Can I answer your question, Allison?
So, are you approving them twice? Because you just made a motion to approve them again.
Sounds like you may need to amend your motion, Bob.
I'll withdraw my motion and just make a motion to approve August eighth and August eleventh.
Second. I mean, I cha, I, I support that with my adjusted second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving those minutes with the additions or corrections indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here for any of these.
Okay. No problem. Alright. We all set on that? Okay. Moving on. Citizens' comments or concerns, item not on the agenda. Who'd like to be first, ladies?
I'll be, I'll be first. Martha Clifford, the Recreation Commission. I'd like to have an update on the status of the village school. What's happening there and do you have any information for us?
I believe the, um, the status is, we're waiting for an appraisal, and we hope to have that soon. And you are aware that both boards voted overwhelmingly to sell the building with the condition that the Recreation Department be given a long-term lease. So, does anyone else have anything else we could add to it? Mike, have you anything in addition to add to that? No? That's the status. Martha?
Okay, so, another question. I have the, the drawing, the latest drawing of who's going where, you know, the daycare, the rooms that she's going to be, and then what Rec will use. We, we've got some questions and wondering if we could be involved in, in, you know, when it comes to the point of doing something with, with these rooms, if Rec could be involved.
Sure. Certainly, I would suggest, I'll just make a suggestion that you meet with Mike as soon as possible and see if you can iron, iron that question out. Okay. That's Mary.
Um, I have, uh, I have read the minutes, uh, Mary Drogi, sorry, that's a little road. The minutes posted of August eleventh, and I have some follow-up questions. First of all, it's, uh, it's not clear in those minutes if the land west of the building will be separated and not sold.
I believe that's being, being worked on, uh, and a decision will be made. You'll be advised as soon as a decision is made on it. No decision has been made yet, but it is giving, being given serious consideration, yes.
So you're considering it, but your decision to sell, you didn't talk about separating out that land. So you're going to make a separate decision about the land west of the building? Because you already decided to sell, right?
Yeah, sell the building, and it appears to be a small portion of land with the building, and serious consideration is being given to retain the remainder of it, down over the hill.
Okay, thank you. One big question is, if the building is to be sold with some sort of stipulation that Rec uses the yellow portion according to this map of this building, uh, that gets carried forward no matter who owns the building? And how is, two questions, how is rent paid for then by the town, and how is rent controlled? Or can whoever owns that building just decide to charge the town whatever they want?
It would all be in, it would all be in the purchase and sales agreement.
Okay, what about a future owner after that?
The lease, the lease is valid, runs with the property.
And it's going to be a set amount of rent, not-
I don't believe that's been decided as yet.
Okay, and does Rec have money in the budget to pay for rent?
Of course not.
Okay.
Neither, neither does any other department.
Not, not in this year's budget.
No.
Okay. Uh, it seems as though, uh, this is being proposed as an entrance. I'm assuming that's kind of what that means, a new entrance on the library side. Is that, Mike?
Mike?
That was originally proposed, now they're, after talking with the Division of Fire Safety, doesn't look like that has to happen.
So where would the entrance be for Rec?
The west side.
This side?
The west, uh, far end of the hallway.
Where your thumb is.
Okay, so where does Rec park?
Out back. That, that would be part of the decision the board makes on sale of the land. We're trying to, right now, we're in the process of, we looked up the land records, and there's one little strip of land where the driveway runs on the west side. That, we're trying to get, where the deed shows the town owns it. So that's been a holdup, we're, we're trying to find, but the parking would be out back there. There's, there's already parking there.
Okay, so no, so there's no, um, so people have to park here and walk back to there? So Rec, okay.
No, they, they would drive along the west side of the building.
Yeah, they drive, they drive here.
Yeah, and park there, yeah.
And park there, and then walk back to get in.
Right now. Again, with, with, there's a doorway that's closer to the, and the gymnasium side, but that doesn't have a key entry like the west side door does by the classrooms.
This door might eventually be the entrance into the gym?
It's something that we would, we could discuss.
Okay. And is there consideration given to the fact that the girls' locker room is not being given to the Rec side of the building? How, how will that be worked out?
Right now, there is-
The boys don't have a locker room, or?
Well, I mean, the locker rooms, I'm not sure how much people take showers in them, but it, it, there's other bathrooms there, so we, we'd have to determine what the outcome, this would be, I think, part of that discussion with the Rec of how to best utilize that space. Because we won't have the girls, it's part of the, it would be part of the lease.
Okay, I have another question. It seems in the minutes that, um, the daycare, uh, is not paying very much because they, uh, because there's, um, the twenty-six thousand dollars of the thirty-six thousand is being set aside in case, what, they don't get to buy the building or something? Is that what that's all about? It's a little confusing to gather from the minutes.
Still, that's, that is all still under discussion, Mary.
Okay.
No, no, no decision has been made on that.
I'm just reading the minutes and trying to understand the minute.
That's quite alright.
My question is, if the improvements that she's making, she gets compensated for in the end if she doesn't buy the building, those are improvements that are specific to her business, it just doesn't seem right that the town has to compensate her for those improvements. That's my opinion personally, as a taxpayer in this town.
Okay.
I guess those are, uh, those are my questions right now, thank you.
I have, I have a question with Mary.
Bob?
Where did you get that map that you have?
From Rec.
From Rec?
Yeah.
Did you guys get?
That was handed out at the last meeting.
Oh, I wasn't here.
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that sometime?
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Is that it, Mary?
Yep, that's it, thank you.
Any others? Yes, Mary too.
So, Mary McIntyre. So, I think I heard you correctly, that the decision is to go forward by selling the CBS building, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. In these minutes, it appears to me that you, you're considering entering into a lease.
Pardon?
From these minutes, it appears that you're considering entering into a lease.
That would only be a short-term lease.
But that isn't what the town, you've told the townspeople. You've told the townspeople you're going to sell the building.
That we are, if, it's very complicated, where do, okay, time out. It's very complicated, there are two boards that are involved in it. There is the Rec Department that is involved in it. And there's the possibility of a business that would like to lease it for a short term. All those things have to be worked out. But to answer your, your initial question, the intent of both boards is to sell the building.
Okay. Just as a taxpayer, I just think that everything should be out in the open. And you guys were very clear to the public, you're going to sell that building. And it's very different now hearing that you're going to enter into a lease.
No, it is going to be all out in the open, but during the period of negotiating with both parties, and you're involving lease and real estate, it isn't necessary, according to state law, to be out in public where the rumor mill will grind it out. We want to prevent facts, not misinformation.
Okay, and one more question, is the numbers here, do the Hubbardon Select Board members get the same number of votes as Castleton?
Yes, they do.
In these decisions?
Yes, they do.
And why would that be when they only own eleven percent of the building?
Because, because their, their board represents their town, just as this board represents this town. They're entitled to the same number of votes, and that has never been questioned until now. But their percentage of liability would be eleven percent, and the taxpayers of Castleton, it would be seventy-nine percent.
So?
Isn't it seventy-nine?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, I'm sorry, I, I missed ten percent.
So if, if the town of Castleton owns almost ninety percent of that building, shouldn't our, our weight of decision-making be a little heavier than Hubbardon?
Sounds like a legal question, and I don't think there are any attorneys sitting on this board.
But that isn't a question that anybody on this board is considered, that they get-
Was never brought up until tonight, Mary, by you.
Mr. Chairman?
That's disappointing.
Okay.
Well, the Articles of Agreement that were signed says that the decision has to be made between the two boards. So whether three people vote on that board or five people vote on that board is irrelevant, as long as they have a quorum to, so it says both boards must decide, or agree, I should say. So, they, their board gets the same amount of, by the Articles of Agreement that were signed back when this, between the Slate Valley.
But if they only have two members, the boarding members, if you guys make a panel, okay? Make Castleton-Hubbardon panel, but they only get to contribute two people, then the Castleton vote can outweigh the Hubbardon vote.
I don't see, I, somebody has to correct me, but it just says both boards, it doesn't talk about number of votes. Both boards have to make, have to come to an agreement on the use of the building. So their board gets the, the choice, not their people on the board.
Okay, any others? Yes, Jen?
I am Jennifer Jones, thirty-four, North A. Woodard Way, and I'm here to ask the Select Board if they would support flying the Ukrainian flag this Thursday in front of Town Hall to recognize six months of war in Ukraine and also thirty-one years since the Ukrainian Parliament voted to leave the Soviet Union. Also in recognition that very soon, in the next few months, we're going to have about a hundred Ukrainian refugees coming to the state. And it's an act of showing openness to those families that are relocating to Vermont and in solidarity with the Ukrainian people who are fighting right now for the last six months for freedom in their country. I have a flag, so it can cost the board anything to fly it for the day in front of the town of Castleton. Other towns in Vermont have all been approached, and their boards are, I, I don't know the decisions of other towns at this point, but I know that Burlington's been approached, Ophelia, Rottland, and I was hoping our local town wills.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there a motion?
Joe? Well, I, I guess I'm willing to make a motion that we approve the flying of the Ukrainian flag on Thursday?
August twenty-fourth.
August twenty-fourth?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Discussion?
Um, couple of questions. Would that be in place of the US flag or below the US flag?
I think it would be below.
Would the Ukrainian, country of Ukraine be okay with that? Because the United States would not be if it were the, if it were the way, other way around.
I believe that's how it is standard, and flying the US flag is always prominent when another flag is, is also in the same space.
If that's the case, I have no objections.
Okay.
That was my question too.
Your question? I'll say.
Ukrainian flag is below the American flag.
Sure. I've been flying one for two months up there, thanks to Martha Clifford. All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Did someone second?
I did.
Bob seconded.
I did.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. Go for it.
Well, can I bring up one more thing, not to do with this village school?
Sure.
In our CEDRAC meeting this past Thursday, um, we went over our board members, and, um, we were discussing Joe Bruno not being on the CEDRAC committee from Plan, the Planning Commission. So it was looked up to determine who was on the Planning Commission that might be able to come over to our board. And, um, it was found that Beth Murphy, who just was appointed to CEDRAC, is listed on the website as the chairperson of the Planning Commission. And she's not a member.
No, she's not, no, no.
So-
Joe Bruno was not on that list either, and he's still, as far as I know, still the chair of the Planning Commission.
So we just need to get that squared.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Just not wait to the end. Has the CEDRAC taken a stance on the Sand Hill project?
We are not going to because it's a moot point, I'm lying.
So you're not taking a stance for or against?
That's-
Okay.
Okay. You ready, Chief?
Absolutely. Good evening. Chief Van Houtt, Castle Police Department. You should have the packet there for our lot for July calls, calls of service. We're about the same, we're averaging about 800 and a little over 800 per month, service calls. Nothing really stands out. You know, we're all pretty consistent in what we do for service calls. Any question on the service calls? Okay. From the rest. We had fourteen last month. We had, obviously, we had an increase in DUIs. We got five last month, so that was mostly on the weekends. It just seems maybe that was a July thing. I don't know. We also had increase in conditions, release violations, really concerned with one person that we could be dealing with. And I think that's it. Any questions on those? Okay. Traffic violations. Last month, we rode 124. We did go up July traffic. We saw a huge increase under 30 because of 22A. Everybody was using that as a highway coming down through, so you saw a lot of that going on. Any questions on that? Calls of service for the university. Hang on, hang up. Suspicious person. We know that the university started up today officially. They are open for business. Freshmen came in earlier end of last week, and the upperclassmen came in on Sunday. So we did see an uptick this past weekend. Of course, it was August on some activities. So we'll be probably trying to at least, try to get three people working both Friday and Saturday night, whatever we do. We also, we also did this past weekend, a community project that the university put together. They were able to help out quite a bit. We had two of our projects we couldn't get done, but I know Martha used them for painting into the Crystal Beach, the garage, highway part, we had them up there. We also had them do litter pickup at 4A East, almost on the I-4 line, that area, the green dump, Upper Lower, and Exit 5, Park and Ride. Because we've noticed that there's a lot more traffic, people just hanging out there. Any questions on that stuff? Other? We talked about our traffic enforcement was up. We've already mentioned that. We're continuing to do residential property checks. I did have a burglary at the Village store two weeks ago that I'm working in. The camera work is fair, but you really can't identify the person. So they were able to get to tobacco products and the lottery tickets. The lottery tickets have to be activated, so that's, that's a moot point. Once they are listed, if that store doesn't activate, and they only, they only can be activated to the store that they are sold through. So they can't, another store can't activate it. So, still working on that. Had to have been a small person. It has some footage of them, but not really enough to identify the person. We're still working on it. I have a couple of leads. Other than that, our speed carts are still going strong out there. We'll probably remove them probably a week or so, maybe two weeks after Labor Day. We'll probably take the one off the Creek Road, maybe move that. We'll probably take the one off of Johnson School and Forkbridge, and we have one down here, Route 30. Questions, comments?
Questions for Peter?
Just a quick one, Pete. Have you ever, I'm sure you have, but I forget, I don't recall what you told me. Looked into the permanent ones, like they have going into West Rottland?
Yeah, now, someone asked me that, and I thought the board was, we were looking at it, Justin had some price amount. What happened to that whole thing? I don't know.
I guess I'm asking you.
Well, the board has also approved the ones that were, I think he, I think he had, I think he did like three different bids. I think he got three different types. Where did I go after that, Mike?
I never even saw the three bids on there.
I say, we don't, I don't think we saw-
Well, I know that it was a discussion.
Yeah.
We had brought it up a year ago, actually. Talked about that. So I had Justin look up, you know, some ones, and we did come up with some ones. So I'll have to, I'll talk to Justin tomorrow if he comes in. We'll, we'll see that.
Somewhere that fizzled out, and if you can-
Yeah, I don't know where it got lost.
You can build a fire under it, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions for Peter? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you.
Moving on. Signing of the tax warrant, an annual event. Mike?
The only, I, I didn't pick up on this till now. On the tax warrant, we're under, under greetings. The second line says, "Collect of the several persons named," and then it talks about name of each person. The only thing is that this is listed by parcel number, not names.
Can you explain what, what this is, Mike?
It's the, what, everybody, by parcel number in here, it says what people over taxes off the grant list and assessments. So this is all-
It's everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. The way, the way I read this is several persons named. The whole town is a lot more several persons.
Yeah. But it's not names either, it's by parcel.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So it's everybody. Everybody that pays taxes in Castleton is on this list. Okay, that's kind of what I took. That wording really throws it off.
Want to change, is it, is this taken from statute?
Yes.
I don't know if this has been copied over years and it's never been-
But I wondered, yeah.
-looked at, and, but I just looked at it. If, if it says persons or names of each person, they're just not listed by name of a person. They're listed on here by parcel number. So it could, you could insert in their command and levy and collect of the several persons as something about, you know, by, by a parcel or something, because it's not, if someone looks by, on this thing for a name, they're not going to find it. Maybe I'm splitting hairs on it, but-
However, all you gotta do is look up the parcel number and you'll find out who the owner is.
Yeah, but it's-
Well, but it's named in this list. No one has named in this list.
Yeah. I would just recommend maybe add something to, to include parcel numbers applicable to, to-
Can we legally do that? That's the question.
Well, the question occurs to me is, would it be, how hard would it be to create a list of, a grant list report by name instead of by parcel ID?
You can do that.
And then that would satisfy the need here.
Because right now, you, by you, what you're approving is we're taking, the assessor gave us all of the information, so if it's just replaced with a, a list of persons-
I know we do this every year, and I don't recall having this conversation before, but I also don't recall if the list was by name or by parcel number.
You got somebody? I just got a comment. If you, if you listen by the name of the current owner, then what happens, property changes hands, and you may be looking for Joe Smith, but really, it's, it's Mary Brown that owns it now. The parcel number, it always stays constant, but not the owner. So I, I, you may want to think about that, and just talk to Jonas, he's the expert.
Well, like I said, we've done this every year, and I'm not hung up about the several persons, because several is more than two.
But why do they list it that way, Joe?
That's probably a legal thing, Bob. You know, several is more than two.
Why doesn't it just say townwide, town of Castleton, taxpayers? When I read that, it sounds like to me like this is a list of delinquents, taxed people. That, that's the way I interpret that.
No, this is a warrant authorizing the tax collector to collect taxes.
Yeah. So why does it say several peo, persons? It's the whole town. I, I don't, I don't understand why it's several persons. Whoever put that in there?
This is probably 200 years old.
You need a decision on this tonight, Mike?
I, that, I don't really know what, if it's time-sensitive at this point.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if, if, it sounds like we're in agreement that, well, let me, let me say, I don't like this language as it stands, and I think maybe others don't as well, and a modification of it to the effect of, "Commanded to levy and collect of the owners of the parcels named in this, in the list, herewith committed to you," would achieve, would, would make it sensible from my point of view. And, and then later, it says, "The sum of money annexed to the name of the parcel or number of the parcel." I don't know. I think it probably would be best to put this off if we can.
I can make a phone call while you guys continue, and I can get an answer on it, to make sure there's nothing time-sensitive on it.
Okay.
Let's start with that.
If you don't mind, and I'll just step out for that, because what's next?
What's your first, your first suggestion, Joe, was to do what?
In the second line, "To, commanded to levy and collect of the owners of the parcels named in this, in the list, herewith committed to you, the sum of money annexed to the number of each parcel respectively."
That makes sense.
Jonas, do you have any comment? Can we, can we change this? The tax warrants? The wording?
I guess you could, well, we don't- The tax warrants, take it straight out of statute. Is that? Can I look at that real quick?
We're having issues, we're having issues with the second line, Jonas.
Usually it's taken right out of statute. The only thing that changes is the date. I don't know what your-
Well, what we've been provided is a list of parcels and amounts, and the cover letter refers to persons.
So you want names as opposed to-
We just wanted to do the right thing.
I don't want names. I'm not in favor of that.
I think that Martha's point is a good one.
Yeah.
I think Martha's point is a good one.
Well, I don't know. Let's just have to go, I guess, I don't know. We always provide names with a delinquent list.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is a separate list.
It's not that.
Oh, that's, that's the warrant, to collect taxes.
Every parcel owner. That's all it is. We're just wondering if the wording could be changed or if that's state law.
I think that warrant goes right out of state law, so I, you know. But each parcel ID has a lien attached, so I don't know.
Dick, we've always done this.
Yeah.
We do it every year.
Sure.
Why haven't we caught, caught?
You have to do it every year.
I don't know why we, ask me.
Waiting for Mike to get an interpretation.
Actually, just mainly to find out if we have to do this now or if we can-
Yeah.
Put it off two weeks, for three weeks, whatever the next meeting is.
Three weeks. I don't know. It's three weeks.
Yeah, it's true, because we've got another Monday coming.
Yeah. Yeah. None of the taxes due, and they do August 30th?
Quarterly.
Yeah.
They're due August 30th?
30, so I guess.
They should do this before that, right?
Um...
Or they do September 30th?
No, August 30th.
This is for this coming fiscal year, so. Come on, Mike. We just got our tax bill a couple of weeks ago, so I would think that they'll probably do September 30th.
That's what I was thinking, too, because that's quarterly.
I don't know that, though. Anyone know when the tax bill is due?
That's only two months.
Anyone know the tax bill when it's due?
Let me look it up. August 31st.
Yeah.
What is it, Allison?
August 31st.
Why is that? That's not quarterly this week.
August 31st.
That's not quarterly. We're only two months into the year. That's not right.
I think you got a fair amount of leeway, don't you?
I think they do.
Yeah.
But I'm just making a point.
Right, no, I know.
It should not be due till September 30th.
I'm looking at one, it's August 31st, November 30th, February 28th, and May 31st.
So it's a month out of sequence from the quarters of the fiscal year, which-
Yeah.
It's probably been that way historically for-
Probably has.
Decades or centuries.
Doesn't make it right, but I mean, I'm just pointing out a fact. That's probably so they can close the books out before the last day of-
Yeah, I'm sure there's a, there's a accounting rea, there's, I'm sure there's a reason in the-
Yeah.
Bookkeeping accounting world for that. I'm thinking we should just go forward with this as it is. What do you think, Joe? We historically have been-
I think he's talking to Christine.
But if we don't approve this and he can't legally collect taxes-
Oh, boy.
-next week, that wouldn't be a good thing.
Here he is.
No, I don't have an answer for it. I have, the answer is, not really sure if there's a hard date on it, and it's been copied, this is one that's been used in the past, so it wasn't questioned, so she's looking it up, but may not have an answer tonight.
Okay. Joe?
I guess my question, Mike, is can this list be regenerated with names as opposed to parcel IDs?
I'm assuming that it, it can be, because she can run different queries on things, so it's just telling you how you want it to sort things. It's, she was just talking about Mary Jo, the assessor.
Right.
So, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the tax warrant as presented.
Is there a second? There ain't no second. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And second it.
For discussion.
Discussion.
What about the fact that the list that we've been given doesn't have any names on it?
I'm pretty confident that historically, this is the same thing we've been getting every year, and this is the first year we've actually wondered about it. I could be wrong about that, but that's my opinion. And I think if, if you take the parcel ID number and you go to the assessor, you get the name of that owner of that parcel without any trouble at all. So I don't think that that's really a important point at this point.
Okay. Other comments? Joe?
In that case, I'd like to propose a motion, an amendment specifically to modify the wording to reflect what I was suggesting earlier. In the second line, instead of saying, "Collect of the several persons named in the list," I would propose we say, "Collect of the owners of the parcels named in the list."
Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second that.
Second it? Okay, I'm sorry, Joe.
And in the third line, where it says, "The sum of money annexed to the name of each person," I would propose alternatively, "The sum of money annexed to the number of each parcel." That's my amendment.
I'll still second it.
Discussion on the amendment?
I have no problem with that.
All those in favor of the amendment indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, the motion itself. We have, I believe we have a motion second on that?
Well, didn't-
Yes, I seconded it.
Okay.
I seconded your motion. We have now amended the motion that you made, so we're ready to-
Vote on the, on the amended motion?
Correct.
Okay. We ready for a vote on that?
Yes. Yes.
All those in favor of accepting the amend, amended motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you Joe.
Have you got an original to pass around?
Pardon?
Have you got an original to pass around?
Oh yeah. In the blue folder.
Well, we're going to change them.
I don't want to sign that with, uh, without the changes.
Oh, that's true. Good point. Has to be changed. Has to be changed and then we'll have to come in the office and sign it.
No problem.
Thank you sir.
Okay.
You got those changes down right Mike? You got them right?
I got, I wrote them down, wrote them down here possibly we got the tapes.
Oh, okay.
Between the two we'll probably, hopefully get it right.
Okay.
Advanced, uh, tank testing underground fuel tank CVS. The, um, cost to do that is estimated at $800 and I believe the appointment to have it done is tomorrow. Is there a motion on that?
What do we need a motion for if it's already scheduled and it's.
It's not in the budget.
Within the town manager's purview to do that.
It's not in the budget, I guess that's why you put it in the.
Is that what you want?
Well, both boards, because it's, uh, the Hubbard and Select Board is voting on this tonight too because they have to pay 11% of this. So we're really, you're voting on to approve it because there is nothing in, in the budget at this point and I recommend that it comes out of town lands. We may overspend town lands by the end of the year but it's applicable place to put it or the appropriate place to put it. And then, you know, knowing that you're only, you're, the town of Castleton is only paying 89% of that $800 and they're voting on the same thing tonight.
Make a motion we approve the testing of the tank at the CVS building?
A second.
Second.
Got a second? Discussion? Okay, I will vote a negative on this unless the, um, the cost is passed on to a possible purchaser in adjusting the purchase price. I understand it's something that has to be done but under disclosure you simply would indicate to a possible purchaser that there is an underground tank and it is recommended that it be tested. And if someone purchases the property then you adjust the purchase price to reflect the cost of the testing. It's only my opinion.
Can I add that to the motion? That's fair enough.
Fair enough.
It should come out of the purchase price, it should.
Sure.
I'd like to add it to my motion.
I wouldn't be surprised if most lenders would insist on that anyway.
Yes, most of them will.
The lending institutions will insist on it, yes.
Yeah.
Yes Mary?
Can I just ask you to explain what advanced tank testing exactly is so we can understand?
So, the, the fuel tank, there's a 10,000 gallon fuel tank, double walled, so the advanced tank testing is going to come in, they're going to pressurize the, that space in between the, the walls to make sure there's no leaks, um, and that we don't put fuel in there and then have it enter Mother Earth.
So this is the fuel tank that is being used?
Correct.
Because there's another one that's not used, right?
Correct. This is the one that's active.
And is that the one by the, uh, the west corner, uh, southwest corner?
Yes, southwest, towards the library, west side, yes.
That's that one. And then the other one, is that just decommissioned correctly and?
The state says it's decommissioned correctly, the only thing they told us to do is fill the spout if it hasn't been already with concrete or something so that it can't accidentally be filled.
Thank you very much.
Are you ready for the vote? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Any questions for Mark or Mike on the manager's report?
Actually no.
Well Dick?
I read the whole thing, no, I'm good.
Bob?
I'm all right.
You're all right?
Yeah.
Joe?
I'm, I'm perfect.
Mike and I have had a few discussions this week anyway so.
There was one thing that was on that list I believe. It was on, on page number one, um, on the scoping study for the storm, Steso Road Stormwater Scoping Study, um, there was a question about the select board, do they concur with the findings in the scoping study as presented and discussed at the meeting, minutes do not expressly state that. And that was from Pete Polchop and it's in the email I handed out to you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think what I get out of this is that they were looking for clarification, does the select board concur with the findings of the scoping study? And my, my, my reply was I, I believe that you guys agreed with the findings but the price wasn't something that was committed on at this point because that's a whole separate process.
Well, and also if I recall correctly, the documentation we were given prior to the meeting didn't reflect the price that was presented during the meeting so we were all a little bit unaware of what to anticipate.
But the, but were, but were you in agreement with the findings of that, the best place to put the, or the salt and sand shed was where it currently sits and, you know, the whole storm water portion of it minus the, the cost of building that monstrosity, is everything else, um, did you find that acceptable?
Yep.
I was okay with the concept, yeah, if that's the question.
Anybody have any questions, problems with that?
Do you need a motion?
No.
From the board regarding?
You need something Mike?
Well, he said they're seeking clarification or they said, "Please confirm and state in the final version of the eight, eight minutes that the select board concurs with the findings in the scoping study as presented and discussed at the meeting. The minutes do not expressly state that." So it would be, I don't know if it'd be a correction or in addition to the clarification in the eight, eight minutes that you did, um, accept or confirm whatever, however you were there, concurs with the finding in the scoping study.
Somebody wish to make a motion to that effect?
I'd, I'll make a motion that we have to modify the August 8th minutes to reflect that the select board concurred with the findings in the Steso Road Stormwater Scoping Study.
Second?
I'll second it, I have questions.
Okay.
What are we concurring to Dick again? Just make it clear.
Well, the, they spent, the engineers spent, uh, what, 15 or 20 minutes presenting their plan and with the whole concept of the, um, where the salt shed should be, where the storm runoff water needed to go, it's all the, and all those details which we didn't really get into the weeds on, it was more of a conceptual thing and they're talking about a big salt shed and sand shed where the current sand pile is now.
Okay.
And properly drained and storm water contained et cetera, et cetera. And they did not want to put one between the pole barn and the transfer station like we originally thought maybe we wanted to and they had some pretty good compelling reasons to not do that.
Okay.
And then, uh, they went on to talk about price and that's where we were caught unaware because the documentation we had and the price they presented were significantly different. So they're estimating now it's 1.2 million whereas we thought before it was going to be somewhere in the 600,000 range, is that correct?
I thought 800,000.
800, yeah. So, and I would be surprised in three years' time if we build this that it'll be 1.2, it might be higher and we'll have to come up with 20% of that.
We have 200 now.
Okay, so what are we agreeing to with this motion? What, what are you agreeing to?
Just the concept that they presented it and we, we understand and accept the concept.
Okay. We're not agreeing to anything to the tune of 1.2 million?
We're not agreeing to spend any money yet.
Okay, okay, all right. I just want to make it very clear because I wasn't here at the August 8th meeting so.
So what?
Here's that, here's, this is probably clear Dick.
Yeah, this is.
This part right here already said.
That's what my motion said, that we concur with the findings in the scoping study.
Yeah.
So let's just give Mr. Polchop what he needs to proceed.
There's no commitment of money.
Okay.
Anything else? You got a motion on that?
I made a motion.
And a second? And a second?
Did I second? Yeah, I did.
I guess we've had discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Are there any questions that you may have?
We just told you we don't have any.
Okay.
Unless somebody does.
There, I just, I'm going to make a comment, it's not a question, I'm very disappointed that Chuck Williams, I don't know who he represents, that guy from the state, doesn't stand behind our purchase of that 250.
I've reported it.
That is.
So you know that, the board knows that, I've reported it.
I'm very, very displeased with that.
Two, two vehicles.
That is not good.
Police vehicle and the transfer station.
That's not being a good salesman or whatever he is.
What I found out.
And he doesn't stand behind it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
How, how that works as far as what flexibility they have in the state bid prices but I just, what I found out was that, that police package stuff because of the lighting that we put in the mirrors, they only do that one run a year, they didn't let us know that when they, when we ordered it. So we're kind of, kind of stuck because if we wanted that package with those mirrors or those lights in the mirrors and stuff, we had to now wait till it can, or be ordered in September.
Anything else from Mike?
There, there is, I think there was something, Mr. Chairman, on, under transfer station.
We've got to do that in executive session though Mike, it says.
Yeah, no, I'm, this is, no, this was about the vehicle.
Oh.
I guess you've got to find the pages on.
Looking under vehicles on page three is the one I looked at.
Page three.
It's highlighted, it's D.
Transfer station, uh, under D, uh, um, so. There's no, another, I got it, I don't want to go into this one, I'll, I'll wait till another meeting. I think, I'm going to open a can of worms that nobody's prepared to talk about so.
Okay. Who is Chuck Williams?
He's the representative for Ford and Chevy, um, for, under the state bids. So he, anything that gets ordered for a Chevy or a Ford vehicle, he is the, the point of contact, he's the guy we call and contact order.
Does he, he represent a dealership?
He, he works at two dealerships. He works at, um, McGee Ford and I believe it's Shearer Chevrolet.
Okay.
He has offices there.
I won't get into it either, thanks.
I don't want to get into the weeds here Mike.
No, I didn't want to either Dick.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, yeah.
I don't, I don't want to get into the weeds here, I just want, um, two quick answers to two questions. How many pickup trucks does the town own at this point in time that are inspectable?
Three.
And do they all have plows on them?
Only, the wastewater has one, the, the new 250, the quad cap does not.
Okay.
And then Bob Wood has the old one that has a plow on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, and I take the, the one you said be inspectable, right, so.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Anything else?
That's it?
Mike, anything else you, you guys?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry Mr. Chairman. On page nine, paragraph 10. Well, it's highlighted in yellow so I don't want to miss it. Um, I know you're not going to want to talk about it tonight, I just want to make sure it's out there for the board to consider. Um, it was brought up last cycle with, last board. Um, you can see in there that a decision would have to be made before January 1st of 2023 on dogs. And I got a visit the other day from a, a landowner up there, um, asking me a bunch of questions.
Oh yeah, yeah.
Other than that?
Other than that? Anything else from Mike? No? Okay. Move on, warrants for approval.
We don't have any purchasers, correct?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion we approve warrant number 0822R for $650. Warrant 0822 for $69,331.85. Warrant 0818 for $7,185.43. Warrant 0811 for $47,282.80. Warrant 0818P for $22,795.84. And warrant 0811P for $36,205.55.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? Discussion? All, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Make a motion we approve warrant 0819P for $654.67. And warrant number 0812P for $698.77.
Second.
Second. Discussion?
I'll accuse myself.
Accuse yourself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion we approve warrant number 0813P for $461.75.
Second it.
I've accused myself from this and not a mount will be donated to Castleton Cares.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Here you go Bob.
Here we go.
What was that? What was that? The appreciation? That was, not the other committee that I said we gave.
Yes.
Eight oh five, it's dark out.
Notice how long, much longer the shadows are now.
We're losing, losing, losing. Two minutes today, there we go?
Yep.
I got ahold of Samson.
Oh yeah. He took care of it.
Got them all here guys, I guess?
Have all nine.
Okay. Uh, moving on, select board comments or concerns. Bob?
Um, I just, I guess this is a question for Joe because you're on the ad hoc committee for the school. Just wondering where the money's coming from to cover our share of expenses at the school.
You knew that was coming. That's above my pay grade Bob. When I agreed to serve on the ad hoc committee, I never accepted financial responsibility for the problem. Uh, nobody knows Bob, I, I think when we've had full joint board meetings, that's been a persistent topic of concern. Neither town has budgeted for this and, uh, there's been some, uh, you know, minor reference to the fact that maybe this is going to have to be covered by ARPA funds, uh, which is an option but we've not made that decision. Hubbardton has a very small amount of ARPA funds as well, presumably they could exercise that option but beyond that, no one sees, has, has this money in their budgets nor has a plan to produce it.
Other comments against, got some more Bob?
Um, probably not for open session.
Okay. You're good Joe? You're good?
I, I take it back.
Okay.
I had a taxpayer call me in regards to their tax bill. Um, I don't want to go into detail on it but what, what's my avenue of course of action to take with that? They're upset that they're getting charged, they say they're getting charged for stuff put on their land.